Welcome, everybody, and we'll start with public comment period.
Yes, we have Shane and Nikki Tiffany and then Rosemary Saunders with CDVG.
Okay. Welcome. Welcome, every- everyone, and, excuse me, all of a sudden I had a froggy in the throat. Yes, I'm Rosemary Saunders, I'm with Ramson Financial. Some of you on the council might remember me from initially working on the sewer project a number of years ago, and then the Hayes House project. So, here with Sean and Nikki Tiffany, and Nick, did you get the paperwork passed out to the...
I did not, because it was so late in the day, they wouldn't have a chance to look at it. So, I just kind of let you explain it to them, just kind of letting you go through. It says we had to fill out an application and apply, just explain to them the process.
I'm going to start talking a little bit, and Sean and Nikki, you step in when we get into this a little bit. What the Tiffany's are looking at doing is to apply to the Kansas Department of Commerce, CDVG program for downtown commercial rehabilitation. This is a program in the Department of Commerce that allows small businesses to ask for funds, a maximum of $250,000, to retrofit an existing storefront. And so, the only way they can do that is to come to the city, since it's within the city limits, because only cities and counties can apply for these grant funds. The city would be basically a pass-through on this project. The Tiffany's would provide what we would call the local funding, and then the grant would be the other portion. I'm going to let Sean and Nikki talk a little bit about the vision for the apothecary building, and then we can get into some other questions with council.
Hello, can you hear?
Yes, you can.
That's what I realized tonight. Sean and I have just purchased the two west buildings of the old apothecary, three buildings that had 117 or no two west doors. And our vision is to rehabilitate the space for coworker, business office space, as well as event space in the city. We hope to have some on the second floor in the future as well.
So, I would add to what Nikki's saying. One of these buildings was constructed in 1863, the other was in 1872, and then the unifying facade was put on in 1884. There's still a lot of potential in these old buildings, but in order for them to last another 100 years, we feel like, and the architects and the experts that we consulted feel like, we need to address any problems today. So, we are, we're going to be putting a new roof on, addressing any issues with the facade, trying, and our overall goal is to remain as historically accurate as we can, as we possibly can give the goals for the space and within our budget. It is truly our vision that this is something that will be rewarding for Nikki as a business, but also something that our community can be very, very proud of. And we're, if these buildings are going to continue to last, we've got to do some foundational type of stuff right now, which is why we're seeking the CDVG grant.
For those on council, Ben Moore is the architect that is working with the Tiffany's. He was also the architect on the Hayes House project. They are also looking at historic tax credits, because the building does qualify for that type of funding. Both of these types of funding are competitive. The nice thing about this, the CDVG application now is it's an open cycle, we don't have a due date. So, even though we'd like to be first in line with the application to CDVG, if the city does consider sponsoring this application on behalf of the Tiffany's, we do have a little work to do. You guys are currently going through a COVID funding application. You receive funding on, excuse me. Some of the paperwork that we would do on the commercial rehab project was the same that you did on the COVID funding grant application. There would be a public hearing, you would sign a resolution that states you have the authority to apply for the funds on behalf of the Tiffany's. There would be an operation and maintenance resolution, and those funds to operate and maintain the building would solely be on the Tiffany's, not the city. Basically, the city would be a pass-through, but once again, it's because only grants can be awarded to cities and counties. Don't know what other questions that you might have. Their vision is pretty awesome, and I believe it would provide some services to the city, Council Grove, it would bring in sales and property tax revenue, as well as the opportunity to employ a few individuals in those areas that they need to hire people to help out.
So, Rosemary, what you guys are asking for tonight is just if the council would be interested in sponsoring it before you guys actually fill out the application and everything, correct?
That is correct. Ben Moore is still finalizing the cost on the project, so we don't quite have all those dollars and cents. Realize the maximum on the grant is $250,000 that we would be applying for. But yes, we are just basically asking the city council if they'd be willing to consider doing an application on behalf of the Tiffany's to this program.
Rosemary, one of the things that, one of the questions I have for you on this is, and this is Debbie talking. What, I know that it's a pass-through, and I know the city, so there's not a, you know, financial burden or anything like that on the city for this. What kind of administrative work needs to be done? I know when the Hayes House came up, there were a few things we had to do. You know, like have a public hearing and do a few things like that. Are there letters that we need to have written, or is there going to be some secretarial stuff that has to be done? I can't remember.
There's a little of what you all just mentioned, Debbie. We will have to have a public hearing, because we have to inform the public, because these are federal funds, of the intent of the application. And then, the Tiffany's have basically asked me to administer the grant when funded. So, I'd be working with Nick and Ben and the Tiffany's and the rest of council here as we had items that we moved through the grant. There will have to be a bid letting, just like what we did on the Hayes House, where we would open sealed bids, put it out for bid to contractors that do this type of work. So, we would be coming back to council for that information and approval. I think Mark, you were on council, and I'm not sure who else. Debbie, were you on council?
Yes, yes, I was.
And Sharon, were you on council? What we did...
Just at the end of it.
Just at the end of it. What we did in order to keep all parties basically on the same page as when we had a bill, we had the Flynn Hills Investor Group sign off on it before it came to the city council. So, the city council knew that Flynn Hills Investors were aware of the bill and how much it would be. So, if that would make you feel more comfortable, and we get to that point, we can do that.
Okay, so, what amount of time that we're talking about that would take? Nick, for example, he's going to have to do a few, we don't actually let, put the bids out, the...
No.
That's all, you do all of that, right?
Right, Ben Moore will actually put together a set of plans and specifications that we will send out for bid, just like when you do water work, or sewer work, or street work in, for the city of Council Grove, you put it out for bid. We would be basically be doing the same thing, but in this case, it would be on a building.
Okay, and those things have to be done, there are some requirements, I know, for the people that you select, I remember that, so.
Right.
That answered my question, thank you.
You are most welcome.
Mayor, I have a question, this is Councilman Brooks. Since this is the historical district, Tiffany's, has your architect got approval from the Kansas Historical Society?
So, we are working with Chrissy Davis, who renovated or actually rehabilitated the bank building adjacent to Farmers Grove, it used to be employed in Governor Kelly's Office of State Preservation, so we are utilizing her services to try to help us renovate the building as accurately as historically possible. Does that answer your question?
Well, not really, but she doesn't work for the Kansas Historical Society anymore, but I'm sure that she'll lead you on the right path.
I know James is involved in it too, he's talked to the architect on it, Ben Moore, Ben Moore is aware of all those things, that they have to go to the state and everything. So, James is going to be involved in it already, so.
I would just add, I commend you for doing this, I think it's great.
Well, we're not sure if we're crazy or not yet, but we're excited, and, you know, I love Council Grove, he loves the history of Council Grove, and it's an opportunity for us to do something that will bless the entire community and frankly, the entire region.
Well, we're excited too, and behind you guys all the way, I think it's going to be an awesome project. Do we have any more questions about, for Rosemary or for Tiffany's?
This is Sharon. I didn't, would you say again what were some of the things you're going to put inside as part of the businesses? It just, it wasn't very clear, and I couldn't understand what you were saying.
Sure, we're going to have open event space for different functions, community events, weddings, strategic parties, conferences, things like that. In addition, we'll have two private office spaces and four dedicated conference room meetings rooms. And then upstairs, we are helping to put in some modules as time facilities.
So, our plan is phase one, it's ground floor level, most of the event space, public restrooms, catering kitchens, handicap accessible entrances, that's phase one. And then, hopefully, we can go immediately into phase two and renovate the upper levels. That is largely dependent on some of these grants. Renovating one of these old buildings is not a key, Devin, and we are going to be dependent on some of the government incentives to do so.
That sounds wonderful. I'm also at the archives of the Historical Society, we do have some exterior pictures, photos of that building that might be helpful to you, so just know we have those.
That would be wonderful, okay, we're targeting some images from that side of town, actually.
There are a few.
That side of Main Street, that seems like there's a lot of pictures of the Hayes House on the north side of the street, but the south side's a little bit, where the town come by.
You might check over with us, okay? But congratulations, this is exciting to see that building preserved.
Well, we believe there's some really cool things happening on Main Street, Council of the Grove, and I travel around my job, and I'm in a lot of these rural communities, and all of them have some character, but frankly, I think Council of the Grove has more potential than any rural community in the state of Kansas. There will be a destination, place both for tourists, businesses, and worksite and hobby apart.
Anybody else have any questions or comments, concerns?
Yes, I just want to also congratulate you and tell you, I think all of us are really excited to see all the things coming on Main Street.
That's for sure.
Hopefully, this is an endeavor you'll be, we can work together on.
Anyone else? Okay, I would entertain a motion concerning this matter?
I would make a motion, I would whack them up, this is Jason.
Jason, okay, do I hear a second?
A second.
Do what's up?
We're... Councilman Brooks.
Okay, thank you. Okay. All those in favor, and I'm going through, doing what we always do on video here, I'll start. Larry? Yeah, your name, Larry Seegrist? I'm sorry, Larry? Okay, let's go on to Mark Brunner.
Yes.
Okay. Mark Brooks?
Yes.
Okay, Keith?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
And we'll go back to Larry, Larry, can you hear me now? I'm...
He's unmuted.
You're unmuted, Larry, can you hear us? Okay. I guess we'll put that in, we'll go forward and put it in, motion carries five to zero. Is that kosher, Bill? Is that okay, Bill, if we do that?
That would be fine, and just note that Larry was abstaining or didn't participate, but oh.
We got him.
Okay, did it, thank you. Okay, motion carries five to zero, thank you guys for coming and talking to us, invested in the community, we're excited.
All right, thank you very much, and we will be in touch.
Okay, Rosemary, let us know what we need to do.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening.
Have a nice one.
Bye-bye.
Bye. Okay, moving forward, let's go, that was all the public comment we had, right, Nick?
That's correct.
Okay, let's go forward to the consent agenda, and that involves the minutes from the previous meeting, our appropriations, our late cabin transfer for C34, and the license to sauceral beverages for El Rachel VA Hope. Do I hear a motion?
I'll move, Mayor, it's Mark Brunner.
Okay, second?
I second it, this is Sharon.
Okay, Sharon? Okay, going through again. Larry, Seegrist?
Yes, is that better?
That's great, thank you, Larry.
Yeah, I could hear everything on your first motion, but between my cellphone and my computer, we lost my microphone.
Okay.
Okay, yes.
All right, well, thank you, I appreciate it, I'm glad you're back. Okay, Mark Brunner?
Yes.
Okay, Mark Brooks?
Yes.
Keith Wessel?
Yes.
Jason Booker?
Yes.
Sharon?
Hahn.
Yes. Okay, consent agenda carries six to zero. All right, moving on, let's go to O Business, the CTS, Nick?
They just matched up last week with the fire station, they have moved, starting yesterday, to library, so they're moving right along, installing LED lighting. As far as RTS with the water meter installed, they've continued on, they still are on track to finish at the end of the month.
Okay. Has everybody, everybody contacted them to let them do their water? I forgot.
We had about 100 people who have, between businesses and residents, there's about 100 that hadn't responded, that had meters inside their homes, and we've cut that in more than half with the letter we sent out. Christie hasn't given me an update over Mercy's app, but by Thursday this week, if they haven't contacted anyone, then Derek and I and Laura will work on getting ahold of those people, so.
Okay. My mail was going down to the store, and we hadn't been down there, so we were, I was one of the delinquents, I felt bad. Okay, very good, anything else?
That's it for that.
Okay, then let's go on down to the next, the North River Rock extension, I think?
I talked to Brady Destrom with BG Consultants last week. Bryant and Bryant Construction, who I mentioned before, is going to take over the project. Their plan is to start on January 25th, we will have a pre-meeting prior to the work starting, so either next week or any time before they start, we're supposed to get together. And they're going to do dirt work, and get the concrete laid, put lighting, and do all the stuff they can do when it's cold out, and then they're still on the time schedule, hopefully being done with that by March sometime.
That'd be great. Who's the name?
Bryant and Bryant Construction, they're two brothers, they have Joe, Bill, their names.
From where?
I'm not sure, that I didn't get from Brady. They actually were, they were the second bidder on the project behind Art Beecher, so they originally bid on the contract for that, but they had agreed to do it, so. And they're filling out a people work right now with the state and KDO, and you know, their stuff file on this.
Excellent. Yeah, that's great. Glad to hear it'll be done, hopefully the weather will...
Yeah.
Okay, anybody have any more questions about that? Okay, let's move on to new business, page 24 and 25 is the first item, and we had a meeting with the fire department, there were some things that they are needing, and they've been kind of putting it off, there was some communication, we had some communication problems, I think we've gotten those straightened out, and so there's some things that they are needing immediately, and Nick, I'll go ahead and let you talk about that, if you'd like, you understand this probably better than I do.
Yeah, so, basically, what's listed there are the items, if you look at page...
24?
25, which is all the items they eventually need, but the pressing ones are the ones that are listed, and the other ones that we can do over a period of time. But basically, that pump runs the jaws of life, and then you need a couple adapter, and then you have shipping, and the good thing about this group is they're giving us a discount for this equipment, and the other thing good about this company is they make it so it's adaptable to equipment we already have. But they kind of put off, getting the, pump didn't pass its test, and I've been able to verify that, and then the jaws of life are almost beyond repair, so that this would take care of those items there, and then Chris Blackholtz and I are supposed to meet here in the next week or two, and go over some of the other needs, instead of kind of scheduled replacements, so we don't have something that just pop up all of a sudden again, so. But that's the total cost of things we need now, and then we'll work on the other stuff on that list over later days.
Their safety, but the clothing that they wear, the uniforms and stuff that they wear are nearing their age of needing to be replaced, so we're hoping to do that just a few at a time, and that will come later, but, yeah, and then their hoses are also testing out right now, but they're getting older, they have to hold so much pressure, and so, right, we're looking forward ahead to be sure that we're ready for that, is, you know, what's coming up down the line. But this is where we're at right now with the jaws of life, so, does anybody have any questions about this? Okay, do I hear a motion to replace this equipment? And fix, I guess, repair and replace? Take your pardon?
Mayor, this is Sharon, I know we agree to replace this equipment as opposed.
Okay, thank you. Do I hear a second?
I'll second, Mayor, this is Jason.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to spend $8,100 to repair and replace the jaws of life at this point. Is that, is the pump used the jaws of life, correct, Nick?
No, the pump runs the jaws of life, they're going to, so that's the first thing we need to get, and then later we'll get the jaws.
Okay, very good, okay, so. All those in favor? We'll go down the list again, Larry? Seegrist?
Yes.
Okay, Mark Brunner?
Yes.
Mark Brooks?
Yes.
Keith Wessel?
Yes.
Jason Booker?
Yes.
And Sharon Hahn?
Yes.
Okay, all those opposed, it would be nine, so that motion carries six to zero, and I know that they will very much appreciate that, okay?
That will come out of equipment reserve, Mayor.
Okay, that was what I was going to ask. Okay, motion carries, and we'll go on to the next thing, and that is the recommendation of the fire committee? Am I right? Yeah. Okay, at this time, I would like to appoint Sean Gooding and Brian Brown to the Council of Fire Department, as volunteer firefighters, contingent upon them passing the background, physical, and drug and alcohol screens. So, I would like to ask for a motion to approve that appointment?
So moved, Mayor.
Okay, Keith? Okay. Second?
I'll second, Mayor, this is Jason.
Jason, okay, it's been moved and seconded, to approve the appointment of Brian Brown and Sean Gooding, all those in favor, and we'll start out again, Larry? Seegrist?
Yes.
Mark Brunner?
Yes.
Mark Brooks?
Yes.
Keith Wessel?
Yes.
Jason Booker?
Yes.
Sharon Hahn?
Yes.
Okay, all those opposed, motion carries six to zero, thank you. Brian, welcome, I saw that you came on. Okay, next, we're going to go to the Sales Tax Grant Committee Recommendation, that's page 27 and 28. You want to do that, Nick?
I can, Keith, if you want to do it, it doesn't matter to me.
Oh, yeah, Keith can do it too.
Yeah, so we met last Thursday to go through three applications that we had for sales tax grant money. One-day applications, the guy joined the meeting and decided to withdraw his application, the other one was Ken Shroom and the Quinton on their project down there, on renovating their historic site down there, the committee decided not to make a recommendation on that. And then, the last one was the Sales Tax Committee approved the Council of July Committee's application, and the committee amended the application to get a remaining fourth quarter money to that committee for the Fourth of July event.
Part of that was due to the fact that there's been some monies that we've got in the past that weren't available this year, right?
Yeah, so in the last two years, usually the foundations are getting bid up all the time for money, obviously, and we haven't been able to get the money we would get, so. So, last year, we had to dip into some of the money that was in the special rec, to cover some of the cost for the Fourth of July event.
Okay. Do I hear any discussion about this recommendation? Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the recommendation of the Sales Tax Grant Committee?
So moved.
That key?
Yes, Keith.
Okay, and do I hear a second?
Second, I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve the Sales Tax Grant Committee's recommendation for the Fourth of July Committee in the amount of $15,000, something around $59. All those in favor? Larry Seegrist?
Yes.
Mark Brunner?
Yes.
Mark Brooks?
Yes.
Keith Wessel?
Yes.
Jason Booker?
Yes.
Sharon Hahn?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries six to zero. All right, hopefully, everybody can get out and enjoy that, which hopefully COVID will be on the downside by then. Okay, next on our agenda is the Morse County Neighborhood Revitalization Plan Agreement. This is the agreement that the Economic Development Group did, or... This is the agreement that the Economic Development Group did, our, our City Economic Development Group worked on about, I'm going to say three years ago, I'm not sure if that was right or not, but, um, we, we're, uh, we do some abatement, believe it's an abatement.
Uh, hey, Mayor, I had Bill kind of go through the agreement, um, make sure everything was good, so if you want Bill to kind of go through what's in that agreement and what it was.
That would be great. That would be great, yes, Bill.
Thank you, Mayor, um, there is a, a existing plan in place that's, uh, in, uh, I think four, five, six years, uh, now, but essentially the, uh, whole idea is to encourage additional development. This particular plan relates only to commercial property and it relates only to properties that are on, in Council Road that are on Main Street and then certain of the side streets that are connected to the downtown area. Are you having trouble hearing this, Sharon? Is it? No. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I think you're, I can, you can hear me. Sorry about that.
Okay.
Right.
I, I, I don't have a lot of broadband where I live, so I'm kind of conservative, I turn the camera off and things, but I thought maybe I might have completed it. But anyway, this plan essentially would, uh, take away any, uh, tax requirement or the amount of improvement, and that apply only for a period of five years. Beginning with year six, then the property will return full appraisal. Now, in order to qualify, the improvement must result in an appraisal increase of at least twenty-five thousand dollars, which in order to get an appraisal increase is going to be actually more than twenty-five thousand actual dollars in construction. Uh, the, uh, uh, there are requirements relating to application deadlines and so on, which are the same as are in place today. And again, the whole point is to encourage development in the, in the, in the commercial areas. Some of these plans in some places, like for example, Chisq County, where I'm more familiar with it, it applies to all property, commercial or residential. This particular plan is only oriented on commercial property.
Okay, and that, uh, so that means the apartments that people are looking at and Airbnb's that, well, Airbnb's would probably be commercial, but the apartments that are above the, the buildings.
I should, I should, I'm sorry, I should have included, it also applies to mixed property, in other words, where you have residential but it's mixed, commercial, a B and B would be an example of that, so they would still qualify. The only ones that would not qualify would be straight residential.
Okay. I know that at the time we did this, back when we originally started, we were hoping to get resident, uh, residential as well as commercial, and the county wasn't interested in that at that time, so it sounds like it's the same, did it, was it ten thousand and now has gone to twenty-five thousand?
No, I'm not sure, uh.
It's twenty-five thousand to qualify.
Now.
The new one says twenty-five thousand.
Okay.
Well, we were part of it in the past, us in the school district were, were a part of this before, um, so there's asking if we would like to do it again.
It's a, it's a really good program, a lot of, a lot of towns are using it, um, I, I know that we worked hard to get the first one in place, it's good, just for example, like Tiffany's doing what they're doing, um, there's several buildings downtown that people are doing this to, um, and anybody that builds a new building, of course, then they would have that abatement for the first ten years on their, for, you know, the building, um, if they spin over the twenty-five and meet the requirements. So it's, it's a good program, um, and it's just for five years, it doesn't, you know, then it gets them back on the tax rolls, so I, I know that, you know, it's, it's well accepted in most places, so. Anyway, anybody have any comments? Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
I might, uh, you, you hit right on the head, that's exactly what our goals was, was to start with businesses and then expand to residential, but as we found out, the county was very resistant to that and it seems they still are.
But it's a good step.
Is this, uh, is this a new, uh, separate program bill or does this replace, did the other one expire, is that the case?
Yeah, yes, basically it's a continuation of, of, of the old plan. Uh, the old plan, I think, did expire, Nick, didn't it, or is it, it's a special expiration, if not actually?
Yes, they just renewed it. Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
In response, yes, sir, in response to, uh, Councilman Brooks, I talked to Bill Casper today, as you know, he's, uh, councillor for the, uh, for the county commission, and he indicated the commission simply was not willing to move past partial property at this time, so you correctly identified exactly what the, uh, situation is.
Okay, thank you for visiting with him about that. Anybody else have any? Okay, um, do I hear a motion concerning the neighborhood revitalization plan?
So moved, Mayor.
Okay, Keith? A second, it, this is Sharon, okay? Okay, uh, let's go, Larry Segrist?
Yes.
Hey, Mark Burner?
Yes.
Hey, Mark Brooks?
Yes.
Keith Wessel?
Yes.
Jason Booker?
Yes.
Sharon Hahn?
Yes.
Okay. And if I could vote, I would vote yes too, thank you guys, that's a good program. Motion carries six to zero. Okay. Okay, um, it looks like we are down to governing body comments, um, let's start with Jason.
I don't have anything, Mayor, I was just glad to see the COVID numbers down this week, so.
Yeah. Okay, um, Larry Segrist?
I have nothing this evening, I will, Mayor.
Okay. Um, Mark Burner?
I just had one thing, uh, Nick, have we got any plans in place for the pool this summer yet, or has anybody had any conversations about that?
No, it's too early to, I mean, we've talked about it, I mean, there, if the gathering numbers, if Morse County voter raises the numbers, it won't be an issue, um, so we're just kind of waiting to see what happens with the numbers, we're just preparing like we already always prepare, we, we pretty much have everything in place that we had last year, so there's not much to prepare other than waiting for, to see what the numbers do and hopefully those go way down, that hopefully people get vaccinated, we can kind of get back to some normalcy, so.
I was just kind of hoping maybe if, um, the, if the recommendation is that we could open it with smaller numbers, that we may need to, you know, come up with some, you know, plans ahead of time, so we're not scrambling.
Yeah, and we have that, um, we did that, we did all that last year more, um, before we decided to not open it, we had all that stuff ready to go, we had smaller numbers and stuff, so we went, we went through that process already, still have all that information.
Okay, if you have any questions about it, that's why I'm asking.
No, no worries, yeah.
Thanks for that for me. Okay, thank you, Mark. Sharon?
Hope you got it, yeah, thank you. There we go, um, no, I don't have anything, just hope the numbers continue to go down and meantime, wear your masks and social distance and be safe.
Okay, sounds good. Keith Wessel?
I just echo Sharon on that, uh, hopefully we'll get this thing turned around as the vaccinations get rolling out, maybe have a little better and brighter summer to look forward to. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Mark Brooks?
Hey, Mayor, I've been asked by one of the subcommittees on the Santa Fe Trail Two Hundred to ask permission to use, uh, Creme Park or Council Oak Park on August twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth of twenty-twenty-one for an event called Grilling on the Trail. It's going to be a sanctioned barbecue contest, um, to commemorate the two-hundredth anniversary of the Santa Fe Trail and I think it's their hopes that this can become an annual event and, uh, they've already registered with the sanctioned organization and, uh, um, and I've already visited with Nick about, uh, you know, getting the spider hooked up over there for this event, but, but, uh, we've, we've not asked permission to actually use the park, so that's what I'm doing.
Okay, what were the dates one more time, I didn't get it written down?
August twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth.
Okay. Okay.
And then you have a motion we approve then?
Okay, who was that?
There's barbecue involved, this is Jason.
Okay. Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second?
This is Larry, I'll second.
Okay. Been moved and seconded to allow, uh, Santa Fe Two Hundred to use the park on twenty-eighth to twenty-ninth of August for grilling on the trail, um, and I'm going to say this, all those opposed, anybody opposed, just say your name and opposed. Okay? Everybody, I'm going to assume that you're in favor then? Motion carries six to zero. I'm with, with you, Mr. Booker, I don't think anybody's going to vote against barbecue.
And, and, thank you, thank you, City Council, uh, and the final thing, I, I just want to say I'm real excited about the future of Council Grove, um, we're getting, you know, we're getting some young people putting their, their hearts into these buildings downtown and, uh, we've got the Santa Fe Trail Two Hundred next year and it looks like, uh, the sacred Big Red Rock that's now in Lawrence will probably end up down here in Olga Walker Memorial Heritage Park, so there's a lot of positive stuff on the horizon, um, and just give everybody a big thumbs up and let's get, let's get this COVID behind us and move on.
That'd be great, that, you know, the, it's nice to see things, people out, stirring around a little bit on a nice day like today and, yes, we hope we can move forward.
And, and, just, this is, this is for Marcus, Marcus, this is for sure that stone's coming, I just feel that it will, so.
And, Sharon, I need to correct Mark, he said Santa Fe Trail Two Hundred next year, he hasn't turned his thumb over yet, it's this year.
That's right.
But it's just funny, but we'll be bringing, uh, a schedule to you of a lot more events here in the next few weeks too, so.
And you are having a meeting tomorrow, is that correct?
We have, yes, we have Santa Fe Trail Two Hundred meeting tomorrow at the Archives.
Okay. Is that an open meeting or is that a meeting?
No, it certainly is, yes, although we, we have to be careful with our limit of ten, but we can move somebody off in another hallway or something.
Okay. It's a, it's a, at the Archives, right? Yes, that's correct. That's great, okay. All right, anything else, Mark? You're done, okay? Um, let's go on to Phil.
I, I don't have anything more, thank you.
Uh-huh, thank you. And Nick?
I have a couple things, the first one is, and I just got today, and, um, is the engagement letter for Cindy Jensen to do the city audit, I just need approval to sign that and send it back to her so she will be an auditor in the chair.
Okay, do I hear a motion concerning that?
So moved.
Okay, second?
I'll second then, Mayor, this is Jason.
Okay. Been moved and seconded to engage, uh, send engagement letter to, uh, Cindy Jensen to, for our audit, our city audit?
Yeah, and, uh, there's a cost, obviously, the, the cost is eleven thousand for the audit.
I was going to say, what did we pay last year?
Same amount.
Same amount, okay. I couldn't remember, I thought it was close to that, all right? Um, all those in favor, um, let's just do the other thing again, all those opposed or abstaining, just say your name and, uh. Okay, motion carries then, six to zero. I know you're probably getting tired of me coloring your name in. Okay, what else, Nick?
So I was contacted by Kendra Good with the Morse County Health Department, um, in the event that they get a large number of vaccine in, they're going to need a place to administer those, so they've requested in the event that that happens, that they're able to use either, use the armory or swimming pool park, the parking lot down there where has the roundabouts, um, they've asked if in the event that happens, they can use those two facilities, if they need them.
Okay, does anybody have any problems with that?
I say yes, allow them to, use it.
Okay. I don't know, do we usually, I guess we probably should vote on that, um, Sharon, I'm going to use that as number one, um, do I hear a second?
Second. Second.
Okay. Been moved and seconded to allow the, uh, I guess it'd be Morse County Health Department, right, to use the, to use either the armory or the park, the, uh, swimming pool park, roundabout for administering a large amount of vaccine, vaccines if we receive a large amount and it would be needed. All those in favor, um, just say aye, we'll do something, we'll do. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, all opposed?
Aye.
Did somebody say opposed?
No, he said aye.
Okay, motion carries six to zero, okay?
That's all I, that's all I have, Mayor.
That's all you have? Okay. Um.
Mayor, Mayor, if I might, I apologize, I've been contacted by a citizen here in town and Nick and I have talked about this, uh, about the, uh, the basketball league, that school's not allowing us to use their facilities, um, but yet, but yet they're, they're continuing to use them themselves and we've got baseball season rolling around and they're, they're going to expect to use our facilities for baseball and softball, so there's some concern out there that this, uh, cooperation isn't being, uh, going both ways. So I just wanted to bring that up to the council, you know, to be aware of what's going on, huh?
I, I, uh, understand, I understand your concern, I, you know, it, that's difficult because I know they're trying to keep their, their spaces, you know, COVID free over there and of course, you know, being outside's a little bit different, but yeah, I understand what you're saying. Um, at this point, I don't know what we can do about it, you know, other than just, you know, remind them that we're trying to co, that all, we're trying to cooperate during this time. Anybody else have anything to say on that? Okay. Um, I have, the only thing I have is, uh, I want to say happy birthday, Kansas, Kansas' birthday's party, so it's something to celebrate and, um, not this Friday, week from Friday, the twenty-ninth of January, and, um, so I've kind of contacted a few businesses downtown and hopefully we'll have a little bit of a celebration this year, can't do a whole lot, but maybe a little bit, so anyway, and, uh, remind you all to continue to, you know, be safe and shop local and, and I think we've got a bright future, so anyway, um, I will entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'm making that motion there.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Yeah.
I second it, okay, then maybe a second to adjourn, all those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries six to zero, okay? Hope you all have a good evening, thank you.
Thanks, yes, thank you.
Bye, everybody, stay safe.